I now call to order this October 7th Friendswood City Council meeting and announce that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by City Manager Murad Kabiri. So if everyone would please rise for the invocation and remain standing, we're going to do the pledges after the invocation. And then we will kick off this council for a day thing.
Awesome. Would you bow with me? Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together this evening to take care of the city's business. We thank you for the blessings you've given our community. We ask that you continue to watch over Friendswood and help us with all that we put our hands to do. It's in the name of your son Jesus we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Murad. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one and indivisible. All right, you guys can have a seat. Thank you. We're getting right into this. I'm not even going to sit down because we're going to turn over our seats here to these second graders. Item number four, council for a day. Consider a proclamation declaring October 7th, 2024, as Wedgewood Elementary School Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. The council's been doing this, like I said earlier, we've been doing this since 2018. So all but I think 2020, we missed that school year because of COVID. But that, this is, I believe, our sixth or seventh year doing this. And so every year we get to do this four times now because we have four elementary schools with second grade in Friendswood now. So we get to do this quite often. And up on your screen, you can see why we started this. We want second graders to learn how government works. We want them to understand the value of community service. I always remind people and these second graders that we up here, we're all volunteers. We don't get paid for being city council members in the city of Friendswood. So we volunteer our time. It's a great way to give back to this community. We want to also foster leadership development in these kids. You know, some year, sometime, hopefully while I'm still alive, I'm going to hear that somebody got elected to city council in Friendswood that was actually a second grade city council member years before. And you know, you only have to be, what, 18 to run for city council? So it could be 10 years from now, we could have one of these kids. And we've been doing it since 2018, so who knows? We could have one any time now. So we want them to take part. These are future leaders of our community right here. And then we want to also support CCISD's character education program. We love that Karen Engel, Dr. Engel is here. I've been inviting her ever since I started. You know, back when you were an associate assistant superintendent, when I started this, she's always got meetings, all the time. So, thank you. Did you skip a meeting tonight? Just for this, yes. It's all about the kids. It's about the kids. And I know that you would say that. So Principal Buffy Johnson has been here the entire time since 2018. So thank you, Principal Johnson, for coming back every year and getting your kids ready. And first school out of the chute this year. I'm not sure every school always wants to be first and go in October. We don't do it in September because we know that's really too soon. But October, these kids are just getting back in the class, you know, they're getting all their pencils sharpened and ready for the year. You know, it's a lot to ask for a school to be ready for this first Monday of October. But thank you all for doing this. So proud to be a part of this. Give me that next slide and I will start. You know, I just, you know, I offer up ideas for this lady that is obviously in charge right here. This is our city secretary, Letty Brish, and she's the one that makes everything happen around here. And I think if I say she's in charge, even the city manager kind of nods his head a little bit because we know who runs the show. So I said, hey, wouldn't it be nice if we sort of put those four principals that were doing this up on the slide? And before I know it, I got the whole roster of all these kids up on the slide too, pictures and everything. So I'll bring up to the stage the first person, City Secretary Elle Whitehead. Yay! And her teacher is Ms. Nettles. Ms. Nettles, where are you? Ms. Nettles, thank you. So you gave up your seat. Do you have to train her to push the slide? Okay, good. All right, next, council member position number six, Marina Mihalavskaya. Ms. Mayo, Ms. Mayo. Mayo. One of these years I'll get that right. Council member position five, Jeremiah Gradnigo. I'm going to butcher this a little bit. Brasset Aguirre. Council member position four, Logan Alley. And you're also in Ms. Brasset Aguirre's class. Mayor, okay, Savannah Johnston. Savannah, how did you get to be mayor? I had to buy yard signs. Somehow you were just anointed mayor. That's pretty cool. That's a way to do it, for sure. And your teacher is Ms. Davis. Who made that happen? Who made that slide move? You did that? Oh, you got a clicker. Oh, see, he's in charge from. Council member position three, Brayden Brown. Brayden, did you have a brother doing this last year? Oh, yeah, okay. That's right. Yes, sometimes I like to point out the former council members in the room. And here we have Council Member Brown out here looking around for any of the other old council members. I don't know if there are anymore, but. Both of you guys. All right, well, welcome back. See, it kind of gets in your blood. First Monday of the month, you think, I gotta be somewhere. All right, make it click. Council member position two, Nora Sanford. Ms. Brasset Aguirre's class again. You almost have the whole class here. Okay, yeah, okay, we got another. Council member position one, Madeline Powell, Ms. Mayo's class. Mayo. Mayo, like Hammond man. City Attorney Claire Emig. Also from Ms. Davis's class. City Manager Lincoln Peterman. So I could tell you all, the city attorney is the smartest person in this room, but the city manager knows everything. So these are the two people that we need the most right over here, city attorney, city manager. We couldn't do it without them. The rest of you guys are just, you know, okay. Pretty good. So let me see what my script says. I'm off script. I've got off scripted a little bit. But I'm going to turn it over to who has the first line, Mayor. Savannah, you have the first line. I'm going to turn it over to you and we'll just get out of y'all's way for a minute.
Yes, okay. Consider a proclamation declaring October 7th, 2024, as Wedgewood Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. Will the city manager please give the council an overview of the item?
Mayor and council, tonight you have before your proposed proclamation declaring October 7th, 2024, Wedgewood Elementary Day in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, Wedgewood Elementary is a part of the Clear Creek Independent School District and is an exemplary campus and a source of pride for our community.
Has our city attorney approved the wording of the proposed proclamation?
Yes, Mayor, I have drafted the wording of the proposed proclamation and it is in line with the vision statement of the city of Friendswood.
Will the city secretary please read the city's vision statement for the record?
The city of Friendswood has the following statement as its vision. Together we build our future in a friendly place to live, work, play, learn, and worship.
Thank you. I will now read the proposed proclamation. This proposed proclamation of the city of Friendswood, Texas, declares October 7th, 2024, as Wedgewood Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas. It is now time to take a vote. Do I have a motion and accepting the proposed proclamation?
I move to that we accept the proposed proclamation as presented.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second accepting the proposed proclamation. Is there any discussion?
At Wedgewood Elementary, we pledge to be kids with character and we pledge to be bucket fillers.
At Wedgewood Elementary, we will be honest, reliable, and worthy of trust.
We be responsible for doing what we must.
We will be good citizens and do our share.
At Wedgewood Elementary, we respect ourselves and others too.
We will respect the best in all we do.
Would the city secretary please read the motion on the table?
We have a motion by Council Member Powell and a second from Council Member Sanford to accept a proposed proclamation of the city of Friendswood, Texas, declaring October 7th, 2024, as Wedgewood Elementary Day in the city of Friendswood, Texas.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, Wedgewood Elementary School. With there being no other business, I adjourn this council for a day meeting. Mayor Foreman will recess the city council regular meeting for 10 minutes and invite the students, teachers, family, and friends to partake of the refreshments of cookies and punch in the reception area.
Great job, Mayor Johnston. We can go ahead. Oh, hey, picture, go behind, yeah. Council members go behind, city manager, city attorney, everybody stand behind and we'll get a picture of the group here. All right, council comments and reports, item five. Sally, Council Member Branson, I see you pulling something out. You probably want to go first.
Yes, sir. I want to first thank Friendswood Fire Department, Friendswood PD, EMS, Glenda, for hosting National Night Out, and this is a bragging moment. The Friendswood Neighborhood National Night Out Give Back Challenge. Our little bitty neighborhood that only has 11 houses, we gathered up the most things for the FISD Cares, which is the Bay Area Allowance. So we're very excited. So we took our picture. You'll see us in the paper soon. But now bragging on our whole town, CEDC found this article and it's really great. It's called Small City Living, and it says, "Six Houston neighborhoods shine on new list of best small cities in America." And guess what was number one? Friendswood. So we're very proud of our Friendswood. Thank y'all. That's all the bragging.
In America?
Sir?
That's in America?
In America.
Wow, that's impressive. Council member Hanks.
I had the pleasure of attending the last call for the Friendswood EMS volunteer over to the city and got to hear some of the old stories from Van Williams and Lisa Camp. And it was great. It was really nice. Councilwoman Tranga and I were both there. And it was a rather special moment, and I thank all those people that volunteer spirit which started this back in the 70s and went on. It's just a testament to this community and the volunteerism in this community. It was a nice event to be at. Thank you.
I have one announcement. The Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee meeting that is scheduled tomorrow at 11 o'clock has been canceled. So we're not going to have that meeting tomorrow. And I just wanted to mention that the Anson Jones Masonic Lodge, it's located downtown in our downtown district, hosted its annual golf tournament this past Monday, and it was a huge success. And I want to thank everybody who showed up and supported the lodge and just the chamber for putting the word out to everybody. I really appreciate everybody's help on that. I really do.
Mayor Protem Matranga.
Welcome back, Mayor.
Good to be back.
Okay, more to come on this, but a private nonprofit has been created by Marcy Vincent Guerra with the purpose of supporting Friendswood Animal Control Shelter. Its name is Fans of Friendswood, and its goal is to raise funds to improve the lives of the dogs and cats that are in our shelter and to find them forever homes. So she's always looking for help and support in many different ways as she kicks this off. So if you can support her or you hear about it, pass it along that she's out there and looking to help Friendswood Animal Shelter. That's all I have.
Council member, and we're, well, I just want to thank my city council members from Mayor Protem Matranga and all the rest of you for supporting our special meeting that I was out of town for unfortunately. So thank you all for that great volunteer spirit that you all have too, to come in on your Monday off and have a meeting and, you know, one of your Mondays off. Anyway, thank you for doing that. Item six is public comment to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. City Council of the city of Friendswood cannot deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the city council will listen to public comment, may one, refer an item to city management for further action, or two, direct staff to place an item on a future agenda. During public comment, the public shall comply with council's rules of decorum. Chris Johnson.
Welcome back, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 12A on your consent agenda this meeting is appointing, reappointing Ms. Councilmember Branson back to the HGAC, which is the Houston-Galveston Area Council. What I would hope the council would do, I know it's on the consent agenda, I would encourage you to pull it off the consent agenda for discussion because in all of the work that we've done talking about the Friendswood Parkway, it's come, occurred to me that the HGAC on a regional basis is a really important organization. And I don't think that citizens of Friendswood understand the interaction between the city and that organization as it relates to regional transportation projects, as it relates to all the funding and how that works, and why representation by the city of Friendswood is so important. I think it'd also be helpful because Ms. Branson's been serving on that board to understand what her voice has accomplished and what her agenda is going forward on that board. I think it's important, especially when it comes to regional projects in this area. I know that a lot of folks, you're like, you know, asking, please, sir, I want some more. I think it'd be a big help to understand how Friendswood, what our seat looks like at that table, especially because we're caught in the middle of so many of these other growing metroplexes. So I know that it's on the consent agenda. I would encourage the council to remove that from the consent agenda so that we can hear that information to understand what Friendswood interaction is with that board. Because I mean, I think it's hugely important the work that that board does. Ms. Branson, what your plan is to make sure that Friendswood has a continued and fruitful seat at that table and what we can expect from that board and the projects going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Item seven, committees or special reports. First one, receive the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee Annual Report. The annual report was included in the agenda backup material. There's no in-person report. Does council have any questions or comments? This report has been received. 7B, receive the Chamber of Commerce Annual Report presented by Chairman of the Board Denise Spruill.
Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I am Denise Spruill, Chairman of the Chamber of Friendswood Board of Directors for the Friendswood Chamber of Commerce. You have received a copy of the written report, so I will not cover it in detail. I would like to take a few minutes and highlight some things relating to the role of the chamber in serving Friendswood. We partnered with the city for Santa in the Park and the Christmas Lighted Parade in December. We hosted the State of the City Luncheon for the mayor in March. We hosted our annual car show in conjunction with the farmer's market in April. In May, we hosted Party on the Patio, a reception held for all businesses. In June, we held a Lunch and Learn for Hurricane Awareness and Preparation presented by the Friendswood Fire Marshal's Office in June. We hosted the State of the District in partnership with FISD in September. Last Thursday, we hosted a candidate's forum for the upcoming FISD school board election, and we have partnered with FDFA to present the Shop Local Love Friendswood gift card. The chamber is grateful for its support and partnership with the city of Friendswood. We at the chamber strive to maintain a positive atmosphere that promotes business growth to strengthen the local economy and support the community through awareness, opportunities, and partnership. The chamber staff attends Galveston County events, city council, and emergency management meetings, and 4th of July meetings. Several of our board members serve on the CEDC and the FDEDC committees. Carol is also a member of the Gulf Coast Chamber Executives, which promotes Friendswood. On behalf of the Board of Directors and staff of the chamber, we thank you for your time and continued support. Please let us know how we may continue to serve in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your support, Denise. Appreciate all the work you do, not only at Hometown Bank, but with the chamber heading that crazy board over there, working with Carol. Anybody have any questions for the chamber report?
Very active.
Very active. Do a lot. Thank you very much. Item eight, we have a work session topic, receive and discuss the city of Friendswood Library and Community Center Needs Assessment Studies, presented by PGAL.
And Mr. Mayor, before we get started, I'm going to introduce Michael Medwiddaf because you have not met him previously, I don't believe. He joins us from the city of Alvin. He's our Assistant Director of Engineering over projects and a Friendswood resident.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. City manager took the words right out of my mouth for the introduction, so I can move forward. So going on, moving on on this agenda topic, so I'll just do a brief tee up for PGAL real quick. So first off, it's truly an honor to work here in the city of Friendswood, a place where I've lived and called home my entire life. So I appreciate everybody's effort in getting me over here. So the Friendswood Library and Community Center was identified in the city's long-range study, previously approved by council in March of 2023. PGAL was retained by the city to provide various surveys such as cost estimates and assessments for both the facilities, coupled with programmings and renderings for proposed products. After multiple meetings with Parks and Library staff, thank y'all, we were able to identify current deficiencies, future needs, and incorporate those into a living document that you have in front of you. Both the community center and library facilities are battling the good faith of aging facilities and then being asked to perform it functions in a capacity that they were likely never intended to, or they were likely never programmed for. And through those meetings and PGAL's extensive experience and expertise, we believe that we found a good medium between the current and future needs and providing space for those, for the growing demand of those departments and the highly desired programs of theirs. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan Bass and with PGAL. Also in attendance is Paul Bonnet, the principal for PGAL as well.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, council. I don't think I need a microphone. I got a coach's voice. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I have to first praise, where's my presentation? Michael, how do I get that up? Thank you. All right, now we're going. So first, I just want to thank really quick your staff. It's a pleasure. This is pretty simple because all we have to do is try to narrow in on the vision and the passion that your people have in Parks and Rec and Library. So that was easy. So they're wonderful. So I hope you appreciate that passion because what we're going to show you here is what we came to. And real quick, I just want to give credit to the people. We don't do this alone. We have cost estimators at Howford Busby, Daniel Scott Civil Engineering, one of your neighbors out here, M2L Associates, Landscape Architects, Infrastructure Associates for MEP Engineers, and Henderson Rogers, a structural engineer. So just need to give credit where credit's due. PGAL experience, Michael's already introduced us. I don't think I need to hark on this. Mayor wants me to speed up. So I would like to just point out that we come to you making these recommendations based on a deep, long history and bench of experience working in these kind of senior facilities, civic centers, community centers, libraries. And I can make a long list, but I don't think I need to do that. We're going to move on to the, what we've assessed. As Michael said, we assessed both properties being neighbors and both complementary to one another, right? The community center, civic center, some like to call it, it's also functioning as a recreation center for your community, which is often what most communities have these days is two-in-one. And a library across the street is the Central City Library. So both these hand in hand, we looked first at the community center assessing its property and its existing building, and Michael's already made the point clear, that building has lived its life. I'm going to leave it there, okay? We assessed it very thoroughly. We assessed the property. It's got great opportunity, but the building has lived its life. I think to meet the need in the program that we have, the goals we have for that building, we can't do it with what's there. So what I'm going to propose, you see in the red box, that's the, see if I can use your laser. So the red box there encapsulates the property, the blue box is a parcel of land we want to capture to join that property so that we can achieve our goal. Setting those goals, we start out simply with the high priority items, the things that we have to do, code requirements, storm resiliency, these are important things for buildings we build like this these days we have to think about. But we narrow that down into core needs, the simple need for more storage, more staff support space, recreation space. And then we go down into our desires, our goals for the next 10, 15, 20 years of this facility and what we hope it can achieve. And this big one here, the two big ones here I want you to think about and remember are the senior community. It continues to grow, it continues to support probably more than we can host all at one time in that facility. Much even, I think, greater than that and greater for your community is the youth, the capacity for the youth program. They've got a long waiting list of people that want to participate, and kids that want to come participate in events there. They don't have room for it. That's what we're trying to achieve here. Here's how that lays out on that site. Keep in mind, there's that cell tower that we're not getting rid of, that's the leased cell tower property right there in the center of the site. That gives us a nice challenge to work with, and I love a challenge. Here's a little parcel of land here in the corner that we captured, and it allows us to now put the building similar to where the building was before with a great opportunity for a little possible park amenity right there in the corner. We don't want our building to take front corner. We want the city to have something that draws in the community, the youth, that people to come enjoy the outdoors of approaching this building right there on the corner of Morningside Drive and East Spreading Oaks. And then what's in this building is the three-story portion where we stacked three different functions in the building. And then over here is the recreation and the gymnasiums. Of course, as you can see, you don't need to have a degree to notice that there's parking as much as we could cram onto that lot. We're going to borrow the masons across the street, and we're going to park detention underneath that parking. And the green ones are like, why is parking green? Well, it's because we want to permeable pavement, make it prettier than asphalt and help you with your offset detention. That, here's how that stacks out. That stacks out in a community center rooms, the big rooms that you rent out or the seniors use for games and includes cafeteria and flexible gathering space right there on the ground floor. And then the administrative offices, of course, need to be on the ground floor controlling the building and centralizing its administration. Over here is the big gymnasiums. Two gymnasiums are shown here in this program. Up on top of that is a walking track, just kind of, these are ideas that we generate from that goal. Up on the second floor is the recreation, fitness, and changing rooms, and then classrooms, especially for like the youth programs. And then on top of that is the third floor, which has kind of got some options laid into it where least of office space for potential partners that would utilize what you're going to see. We'll look at that on the visual of the building here in just a second. But that's kind of how the building stacks up program-wise, in this three-story portion and the two-story rec area. I'm going to flip through this real quick so we don't waste any time. You want to come back to it, I'm glad to answer your questions. But here is just how that laid out in the floor plan, just so you can see that we thoroughly really unpacked and tried to drill down into the vision that they have for what they need, not over what they need, but exactly what they need. And here it is. Here's how that lays out. There's how that plays out in 3D, just a vision. This isn't the ultimate design, this is just a vision for what it could be. And ultimately, what our goal here is, is to make a building that the community is excited to come use, excited to come participate and engage in, okay? Not to overdo it, certainly not to underdo it, but to make something that y'all are proud of for 50, 60, 70 years so it can live on even further than that existing building has. And of course, that's the gymnasium over there. This is approaching from the parking lot. And then at the corner of Spreading Oaks and Morningside Drive, this is where I envision, I didn't put anything here because I want you to use your imagination. What could that be? It could be some little park, it could be some little water amenity, it could be nice big new planted maple trees, who knows? But it could be something beautiful that draws the neighborhood in, and then there's your building that they utilize for many, many years to come, for all kinds of needs. Let's get down to, Ryan, what is this going to cost? Well, we broke it down into three cost options. One is basically the all-in, all three floors of that built out, utilizing some partners on the third floor. And ultimately, that would come in, this is 2026 construction cost escalation projection, and we'd hope to do it in that timeframe to avoid further escalation. But that would be $37,521 for that, what we just looked at completely built out, right? Then there's soft costs, of course, below that, soft cost FFNE, design contingency rolled in. That would ultimately be a project, projected project budget of $47,179. That's just a projection, right? Cost two and three are simply breaking out that third floor. If we shelled it and just left it to even after construction, the city and us help make it accommodating for some other partnership, that would be shelled in the beginning, and then we would deduct that amount, about one and a half million there. And then option two is simply, we literally cut a portion of that third floor off and don't build it at all, if we just decide we don't need it. And that saves several million there to do that, if that's decided that it's just not necessary. So I'm going to jump now to the library. If you want mine, hold your questions real quick for me until I get to the library, okay? I know I'm asking a lot, but I want to just punch through this real quick, so you can see the vision. The library, existing conditions. There's definitely some things to be upgraded on this building, but it's already had some nice upgrades put in it, and I think we don't need to, we don't need to throw it away. I think it's got some opportunity left in it. Frankly, it, we also just determined that cost effectiveness, it would just cost a lot and the property to build bigger on this lot or somewhere else. So let's focus on using what we got if we can, and here's what this projects. A few upgrades needed are simple HVAC system, the air conditioning system needs some upgrades, substantial upgrades, and then the, some of the older existing components, because this building has been kind of upgraded in a few different phases. And then the electrical system and a, and a little bit of plumbing. But other than that, basically this picture down here just kind of shows you what we're going to focus on improving. They need some space improvements desperately. So what we have here, I'm going to skip on past this. It's the same thing as before. We're simply drilling down to the goals. Let me unpack that for you. Here is where we propose, that red box right there is where we propose to build on to this existing building, utilizing what we've got, which is a driveway that we don't need, that we could build out and over and capture some of the space they need to get some more interior space improvement. That's what that addition looks like right there in orange, and some potential outdoor space without really consuming hardly any of the parking. And we could even put back some of the parking there in yellow that we've taken away, so we don't lose any parking, because they're already borrowing it from the church next door. So here's what we have here in the red box is the addition onto the existing facility. There's not a lot changing places in that existing northern half. We're not trying to remake the thing. We're trying to improve the thing. So the goal here is to completely redo the admin area so that it could actually serve its purposes, because right now it's, it just simply is not sufficient to serve their admin needs, and, and they're storing stuff more than they're even able to office. So that would help give them a nice admin area, a nice place for the friends in the library to help them support all their needs in the building from those volunteers, and then help them kind of with their circulation, centralizing it, their circulation, storage. This over here, this, this and the children's area, this is the two main things that this, that this facility needs to improve. Same problem as the Community Center. They have a lot of people that want to meet and use this facility. They don't have space for them. It's booked out all the time. So what they need is, oh, yeah, I'm going to skip there. We want to basically double that community area. If you've ever used it here in the front, we want to double that community room, put a kitchen back on it, and increase the children's stack area, and make some quiet reading room area and potential indoor play area so that those can be utilized by the family, maybe a lot more friendly to the family, to the moms, the little ones, and trying to come to the readings and things like that. This would accommodate them much better. Also, this would accommodate the big gatherings that happen quite periodically in the reading area right now that really disturb the stack use. So skipping on down real quick, the other key thing I want you to just know is that they have a lot of great STEM and maker space resources already in their hands and no place to put them. So this right here takes what was the teen area and the other kind of teaching and studying resource areas, and it gives them a place, a nice home for a STEM, that's science, technology, engineering, those type of things, and maker space, study area, especially for those homeschool kids that want to come and do that kind of stuff. This is a great resource for them that we've tried to centralize up here in this area along with the other resource in the, in the building. And so it basically just consolidates and makes everything much more departmentalized and accessible. And I think it's, I think it's a very successful idea. Here's what that looks like being added on to the front, a little outdoor storage and reading area, not storage, probably public gathering area and patio to kind of invite the public in and utilize, and we love to use the outdoors when we can. And then this, this area over here is where you saw the, the community area grow, and we just basically pop the roof off and bring in some natural light, make it a really nice inviting space like we've done in a lot of newer library structure projects. So I am going to jump on down to the cost estimate real quick. That one, all the upgrades, basically everything you saw and we talked about, especially with the upgrades that are necessary to the facility infrastructure, would come in at around $10,695. And with some soft costs, that is wrong. That's a projected 5% design contingency, and that would be an all-in project budget of about $13,869. And to be quite honest, that's half of what building a new library of about 30,000 square foot would be. We've, we've got a couple around this side of town y'all go visit and look at. We could, we could do very great upgrades to this building within that, within that margin. So I just want to say, project timeline, I don't need to waste any time on this slide. I think you know what a project looks like being done, but just if you had any questions about how this would play out, that's how it plays out, design to construction. Goal, of course, especially with the budget, is that these are under construction and happening in 2026. That's kind of the projection. But I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to participate with these folks. Very wonderful folks, great vision, and I'd love to entertain any questions you may have.
I've got, I've got one.
Thanks, Ryan. Go ahead.
Was there any looks at combining the two facilities into one?
And I'll, I'll gladly answer that if you want to add to it. Feel free to. Originally, you may recall when we presented PGAL's contract to Council, we had discussed the potential of acquiring the property right on Friendswood Drive and matching it with the property on Spreading Oaks and Morningside. That private property owner was not willing to work with the city. Under that scenario, we were thinking one large facility that would house both functions as well as the county and potentially some state offices as well, and that's not an option. Well, there's not enough space without going really vertical, and a lot of these facilities, considering the age of the, the public, we want to maintain as much on the first floor as possible.
Did he capture a lot at the Community Center? Is that the Boy Scouts building?
The Girl Scouts building.
Girls, this little house right here?
Yes. We do own that property and the building. The Girl Scouts currently utilize it.
I thought we owned it, so we would be utilizing.
We would be, we would tear it down and then would give them space within the Community Center, or Civic Center, sorry.
I have a question. We've also talked about a place to vote. That seems always be a struggle. Is, are any of these facilities going to include, are there for that?
Yes, ma'am. And he's going to the slide there.
It's part of the possibilities of the third floor is other associated government partners that might, might have, might find themselves a home and a partnership with us to, to utilize this space that we want to shell out on the third floor.
Just as a reminder to Council, this project is not funded beyond the, the design work that PGAL has completed. In order to accomplish this, it would require, one, partners and two, a potential bond election.
Right. Yes, understood. Big bucks. It's a lot of sticker shock there, Ryan, but we, we know what it costs to build things these days. We all would love to see this get done, and there are several ideas that we have to skin the cat, so we'll, we'll head off in that direction and work it. Any other questions?
I've had a couple of easy, quick ones.
Questions are always easy, but the answer is sometimes, not quick.
I'll make them as easy as I can there.
Oh, you've got answers. Give me the, just the broad brush on the activities that you saw or you're thinking about that you built into that Community Center. I mean, just the big ones. What are the top five or six?
The Community Center? It'll help to look at these plans.
Sure.
So basically, the gymnasiums speak for themselves, right? We need to use space. They desperately need to use space. And senior space too. I mean, you, you do things in there. But I think the youth was the big one we heard, was how many kids, 600 at one time potentially in this after school program, could grow to 700 easily, right, in the next 10 years? That's what this is. We could use three gyms, but we narrowed it to two. The, the gallery space, the flex space here, this is a way, this isn't an ultimate design, but it's a way that we could provide, very flexible way of using these spaces. Let's say the daddy-daughter dance. Maybe they could use a gymnasium, but maybe they need this space that night, but the seniors also are having a bunko game or something. I don't know. There's something going on. We, we, somebody's going to have to pick. Right now, somebody's going to have to pick. This allows us to not have to pick, right? Or to have the youth program teaching thing going on while the senior luncheon is going on. So this, this just gives them the space to not have to say no to the, to the different programs that want to interact in the same place.
And, and so, oh, were you done? Sorry.
No, I was just going to flip to the second floor where basically just adding in the fitness component, especially for the seniors. I heard this was a desire, a big desire to add in in the classrooms as well. I'd love to put those on the ground floor, but as you can tell, we're trying to stack it.
No, thank you for just reviewing that. I, I assume that any new building like this would be completely, you know, ADA compatible?
Absolutely. As far as I can project and foresee into the future, God willing, I will make it as, as age-proof as possible, right?
Yeah, we get a lot of requests from, from our residents with, with children and adults with special needs, being able to have more access to a community building.
Absolutely.
So what's, what's the current age? Do you, you remember what the current age of that activity building is, our current one?
Fifty years.
Fifty years old.
Fifty, I think it's fifty plus.
Fifty plus. It's over fifty years old, but yeah.
It was the library when we were in high school. It's old.
It's got some existing equipment in it.
I didn't want to go back that far. Maybe it was for you, not for me.
And existing plumbing.
Okay. And so moving to the, to the library, if you could, the percentage of added space, what, what are you thinking? What, you know, what's, what's the additional percentage roughly? What's kind of space you're adding? Is it 10%, 20%?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty percent. We basically grown the, tried to expand the plan. I believe that was thirty percent.
And what stopped you was just available parking, available land?
Yes, yes. As you can tell, I'm not touching, well, I did touch the parking. That's a lie. But I, I don't want to take more parking. We tried to do the best we could. That structure, we also can't really stack on it nor would I want to. I think that would just produce problems more than it solves. So this was the best solution. We, we tossed around a lot of ideas, but I think what we've done here is the probably best we can grow the building and not grow up. And that would be unpacking a whole new set of problems, or, or problems to solve, challenges.
Because that building was built as an office building, if memory serves me correctly.
Was it? Originally an office building? I didn't know that.
And it's been retrofitted many times, and it, it should be in a similar age, over 50 years.
It is, it is. But looking into the upgrades it's had, and like I said, the cost of replacing a new library, like we're real proud of, you know, what we built in Pearland. Go, go toward that. Go give that a look, and, and I can give you the price point on that, and that's simply, and the real estate that kind of needs, and that's just not what we have on this lot.
Thank you so much for the, for the answer. Thank you. That's all I ask.
Okay. So I noticed that you didn't go out to the side. I think it's whispering signs or next to the, Spreading Oaks, next to the church.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going back to.
Spreading Oaks.
Oh, you, you're talking about.
Yeah, where that.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
But you came to the front. Is there a reason why you didn't go to the side?
Absolutely. So I'll put it real bluntly. The, the driveway is not necessary. The, the drop-off is. That, my understanding is, it may seem silly, but unless you use it, because what I hear, it's since the pandemic, it has become a, an asset. It's become something they don't want to lose.
The staff wanted that, just to.
Yeah, we don't want to lose that. Plus, we have challenges building out this direction. I could make you a long list of pros but cons that outweigh it, to come out that way toward the street versus how easily I can come out this way.
Well, yeah. Great discussion. Got a lot to chew on here. Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Item nine, City Manager's Report, presented by City Manager Murad Kabiri.
Yes. Mayor and Council, I only have three brief items for you this evening. Thank you. First off, I want to highlight National Night Out took place this past Tuesday. As Councilmember Branson had made mention, there were a number of folks in various communities throughout the city that participated. There's some photos on the screen before you. If you haven't been on social media, either Instagram or Facebook, there's a few videos that our Communications Department had produced related to National Night Out that are pretty cool and getting a lot of views. I would encourage you to go out there and take a look. So thank you for your participation. The second item, I'd like to recognize Linda Newstead in our City Secretary's Office. She has recently completed her Texas Registered Municipal Clerk certification. As you know, this requires several hundred hours of continuing ed and testing in order to accomplish over a course of a couple of years, and we want to congratulate her for all her hard work. There will be a formal ceremony and graduation ceremony in January. And then lastly, we were talking about the Friendswood Library recently. The numbers are in for the, the summer reading program. As you can see, the kids kicked the adults' butts thoroughly, but it's something we like to see. Just the sheer volume of numbers that you have on the screen before you just are impressive and they're daunting. But as always, the library does a fantastic job engaging our students, especially since they're out of school during the summer months, and we're appreciative of their efforts. And I'll turn it over to you guys if you have any questions.
No questions. Item 10, Business Items. Consider authorizing an inter-local agreement with the Harris-Galveston Subsidence District to participate in the Water Conservation School Program H2O Lab for 2024, 2025.
So Mayor and Council, this is an annual contract that we have with the Harris-Galveston Subsidence District. It's an educational tool that allows for third graders in our community to learn about water conservation. In exchange for our participation, we get groundwater credits in case we can't use surface water resources during drier months.
Does this, does this program cost us anything?
It cost us 19,000 or thereabouts, a little under $20,000, and it's paid for out of water sewer fund.
But if we ever had to start pumping water, it would pay back fairly quickly.
So thankfully, we haven't had to. Since the establishment of the Subsidence District, we've been fairly good about sticking to the, the thresholds we're limited to. But if we would exceed the threshold as allocated by the Subsidence District, we'd be charged, I think, five or seven dollars per thousand gallons. And as you know, we charge about $2 per thousand gallon, so there's a drastic difference between what we'd be paying in penalties.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed. See, pass four to two. 10B, consider authorizing contract with Galveston County Health District for water pollution and abatement services for 2024, 2025.
This is also an annual contract. We partner with the Galveston County Health District. This is for their assistance in identifying a potential pollutants into our streams and other issues, and they help us resolve those matters with the individuals that are polluting our streams.
We have a lot of problems with that.
Not a whole lot of problems, but once you have a problem, it's a really big problem quickly.
Is there anyone else that does that?
We can hire outside contractors to help us, assist us with that. However, Galveston County is usually the most cost-effective solution, since they're already doing that in, in, in Galveston County.
And I'll ask the question again. What's the cost on this contract?
Off the top of my head, I think thirty.
Thirty thousand, $779?
Yes, sir.
It's gone up $1,000 year over year.
Yes.
I knew that you knew. I just wanted to see if Murad.
I was trying to help you now. He helps me out all the time.
That's good. All right. Can I get a motion on this?
Motion to second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Six to nothing. Okay, item 11, Ordinances and Resolutions. 11A, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 by approving Budget Amendment 11 and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion is second. Any discussion, questions? We got all the brain trust over here from finance, in case you want to ask. Okay, got a motion, second. All in favor. 11B, consider an ordinance amending the city's. Opposed? All the hands been up. Oh, I, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I looked real quickly. All right. All right. Five to one. Thank you. City Secretary. 11B, consider an ordinance amending the city's general budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025 by approving a Budget Amendment 1 and providing for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds. Can I get a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is a sec. All in favor? Six to nothing. 11C, consider on second and final reading an ordinance renaming Mills Drive to Mills Lane.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? 11D, consider an ordinance on second and final reading amending Appendix D, schedule of fees, rates, charges, deposits, bonds, and insurance amounts of the Friendswood City Code to add fees for emergency medical services, patient medical records.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Six to nothing. 11E, consider a resolution, amending resolutions number R2008-54 and R2008-103 to further define improvements that are eligible for incentives in Neighborhood Empowerment Zone Number One, and to refine the, refine the incentives available. Rod, you want to summarize?
Yes, sir. Briefly, the city established the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone in 2008 following the establishment of our downtown district, which back in 2007 was simply lines on a map that afforded property owners the opportunity to rezone their properties to downtown district zoning. What that entailed was they would get the benefit of reduced setback requirements in our zoning ordinance, and they got the benefit of, as part of this Neighborhood Empowerment Zone, that waiving of their development fees, whether that's building permit fees, impact fees. whether that's building permit fees, impact fees, or what have you, as an encouragement for them to develop in downtown Friendswood. Over the years, we've seen the installation of the sidewalk program through the grant with Tech dot. Uh, we see the installations of the lighting that you saw through FDEDC's, uh, projects here in the last couple of years, as well as a lot of properties have since redeveloped. So staff is recommending, in conjunction with CDC, that we don't need to continue to waive fees for any and everything in downtowns. For instance, if you're replacing a water heater in your business, um, that's no, there's no reason to waive those fees because we're still sending inspectors out to inspect those, that, that process. Uh, with the change, we're still going to waive fees if you're doing whole-scale redevelopment. So if you're building a brand-new building and you're incorporating the various requirements of downtown, then yes, we'll waive those fees. But as it stands, we're not going to waive everything, is the recommendation.
All right. Ready for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to a second. All in favor? Six to nothing. Okay, item eleven F, Consider Resolution Accepting The Preliminary Services And Assessment Plan For Authorized Improvements Within The Friendswood City Center Public Improvement District And Setting A Public Hearing On The Proposed Levy Of Assessments. Rod, would you summarize? Oh, you got slides.
We have slides. But it was prepared by our most intelligent employee, our city attorney, so. So we've talked about the Public Improvement District and the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone for the Friendswood City Center for a number of months. That's, well, I say a number of months, for close to two years now. There are a number of things that these districts, the Public Improvement District, as well as the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, is going to fund. And it's broken down into two categories. One, the initial public improvements, which includes roadways. For instance, the extension of Black Hawk Boulevard south into the Woodcombe property. Uh, the building of various internal streets associated with the overall project. It includes earthwork, paving, and grading associated with the total project, clearing and grubbing and demolition, and then detention. And these, this is in detention and above and beyond what we're talking about, what's being built right now. So, uh, the five million dollars of the city's drainage ponds, it's going towards the detention pond that will allow us to do the shelving of Clear Creek in the future. This is in addition to those activities. After the first phase of public improvements are installed and we start seeing vertical construction, there will be a subsequent phase of infrastructure installed, which would be the continuation of roadways, for instance, where they dead-end into the property. It will extend it further south into the, to the east to tie into West Bay Area Boulevard near the Galloway School. Additional sections of drainage and detention work will be done, both on the property behind Brookside Intermediate, as well as in addition to what we're talking about, where the detention pond is currently being dug. Wastewater and water improvements, uh, drainage, as I mentioned, landscaping, park amenities, and the fire station. Now, you'll notice on the exhibit before you, they're broken up into district costs and non-district costs. Well, what does that mean? The district is the Public Improvement District. By law, state law, it can fund public infrastructure associated with, uh, benefits solely to the property owners that are paying that special assessment. They're paying an additional tax, so to speak, in order to locate their, their project within the boundaries of the, the Public Improvement District. There are certain things that the PID cannot pay for in its totality, simply because others outside the boundaries of the district get benefit from it. So for instance, we have a fire station being built. A portion of that, roughly twelve percent of that, is being paid for by the Public Improvement District. The remaining eighty-seven percent will be paid for by the increment created with the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. All of the project improvements will be paid for by funds generated from those properties, but they will be paid for out of separate pots, depending on where they fall. On the next slide, we have a list of, uh, things that have been done to date, things that we're talking about tonight, and the things that are going to take place in the coming months. So to date, we have accepted the, the PID petition to create the Public Improvement District. We've held the public hearings associated with that, adopted the resolution authorizing the city center PID, and we've directed city staff and our consultants to draft what's known as a preliminary service and assessment plan, which is in the backup material this evening. Tonight, what we're asking for is the adoption of the, the ordinance, or, sorry, the resolution that we'll call a public hearing associated with the Public Improvement District. This will be for the levying of assessments. These assessments only levied on the properties within the boundaries of the Public Improvement District. Nothing outside the boundaries, uh, pertain to this, uh, this PID. Uh, we're also asking your consideration in the preliminary service and assessment plan. And I'm stressing preliminary because there will be a final service and assessment plan that will take place as we get ready for issuance of bonds and actually installing the public, uh, public infrastructure associated with it. The Service Assessment Plan outlines the cost associated within the, within the boundaries of the PID. It, it calculates a levy that will be applied to each of those property owners that are within the boundaries of the PID. It also takes into consideration the buy-down of the PID assessment by the Tax Increment, Increment Reinvestment Zone increment that's created. So we have talked previously that of the new values that go on the ground today versus what's there in the future, that increment's being set aside. Well, that's seventy percent of that increment that's being set aside will go towards buying down the service and assess, the assessment for the PID. If they don't put enough value on the ground, that, that PID assessment doesn't get bought down. So they're incentivized to put as much value on the ground as possible to lower their assessment in the long run. So future PID council actions, we will hold the public hearing that you're calling for this evening at a subsequent meeting. We will approve the PID bond sales that will allow for the infrastructure to be reimbursed. So the developer still has to go pay for the installation of the public infrastructure that we talked about. And as they achieve certain milestones in constructions and they're inspected and approved by the city, they will get reimbursed their cost associated from the bond proceeds, uh, from those PID bonds. Uh, approve of final service and assessment plans and actually levy the assessment. And then when you levy the assessment, again, you're levying the total maximum that can be applied to those property owners. And then as they put value on the ground, they will get benefit, potentially lowering their assessment by putting more value on the ground through that seventy percent of the increment that's created.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
The timing, the timing of the dollars for the PID bonds, when would we issue PID bonds to raise funds for the, uh, for the infrastructure?
So the, the issuance of bonds is anticipated to be at the November City Council meeting.
Okay. How much are we going to issue?
Off the top of my head, if I recall correctly, twenty-eight or, uh...
Thirty.
Thirty-seven mil, thirty-seven million. Twenty-eight was the initial project cost.
That's what I thought the initial was. Um, I was, but then, but then there were some other costs in there.
So there's issuance costs associated with it. Those are the costs. Yes, sir.
And, and my question about the fire station is, it becomes a non-district, uh, uh, building. So how, how, we don't assess ourselves, do we?
No, we do not.
We don't assess ourselves because that is city, we don't pay taxes on our property.
Correct.
So who, how do we get that twelve percent?
So the twelve percent is paid for by the Public Improvement District. So each of the private property owners within the boundaries of the PID will pay, as part of their special assessment, will pay, uh, that twelve percent of the fire station. The remaining eighty-seven percent will be paid for by the increment created in the overall project, not in total TERS for, uh, TERS one.
Okay. Have the developers all agreed to, to that and, and understand that?
Yes, sir.
Have they seen this?
They, they've seen this. They were intimately involved in the drafting of this. Now, keep in mind, this could be amended in the future. So if there's, if we see, for instance, uh, we move forward with this project and we have an opportunity to change some aspect of it that's in benefit of all parties, we'll have to, of course, bring it back to City Council for consideration. Uh, and it can be amended in the future.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people approach me in regards to drainage. And, um, Harris County Flood Control District is the flood control district that is governing or has the authority over this. Has, has our, I looked at the detention ponds, one and two, and that, that has the water over there behind the school. And we, we're good, I mean, as far as drainage.
So our, in city engineering...
Impervious cover and all that that's being developed.
Yes. So between our engineering department and our city engineers, whereas, as well as Harris County Flood Control District, they've both signed off and approved it.
All right.
I'll have a couple.
Go ahead, Joe.
If you don't mind. Um, what's driving the timing for approving this tonight?
The, what's driving the timeline is getting value on the ground sooner as opposed to later. So the developer's been doing what they can in, in regard to the drainage and clearing out there with the funds that they have on hand, as well as the funds that the city has put forth for the detention pond. Uh, but they've gotten to the point where they're, they have demand to start going vertical as soon as possible for, especially for the retail pad sites up front, as well as some of the mixed-office use buildings that are directly behind it. So development schedule and demand to, to build.
This keeps the project moving in its current schedule?
Correct.
Expectation. Okay. Um, you know, the document's a, a long document, and it, and it can be complex to read through it. But specifically embedded in this document is, in one section under the, you mentioned earlier, special benefits, that we as city council are being asked to, based now on those, I'll use, I'll use the word attest, but just to, uh, basically approve tonight, that we believe that the authorized improvements are around sixty-six million dollars, and that the assessed levied for the authorized improvements is around fifty-five million dollars. How did those numbers get calculated?
So there, there are two components to the calculation. One is the engineer's probable costs for the infrastructure out there. So that's all the roadways, all the public infrastructure, water sewer, drainage, et cetera. A determination of what those costs are, once they finalize the engineering and they start getting initial bids on what those project improvements are. The other component of it is identifying the, the, the corollary benefit to the, those private property owners that are paying into the PID. So there are some costs that are not covered by the PID district. For instance, the money the city put towards the detention pond out there, they're not paid for by the PID, but the developer gets the benefit of those, uh, those dollars in the sense that they're having access to those detention ponds as well. And so the purpose of the service and assessment plan, and for the sake of the private property owners, they need to make sure that what they're paying an assessment for is outweighed by the benefits they receive. Uh, it's a requirement of a Public Improvement District as outlined by state law, and that's what the, uh, testament you're making this evening, uh, says. It's not done solely by city staff. It's done by our consultants at P3, or, uh, it's done by the engineer that works for the developer. It's done by our engineers when they look at the, the plans and evaluate the public infrastructure and the associated costs with it. So there's a lot that goes into it. And then it also is looked at by our financial advisors to make sure that it all makes sense, and it's going to be supported long-term with the, uh, financial projections we have.
So third-party engineers, outside auditors, so to speak?
Yes, sir.
Looking at the, the overall costs. City staff and the developer all looked at these and say these, for preliminary, again, preliminary numbers.
These are preliminary, yes, sir.
These are about what your expectation is at this point. Okay. And the, the last thing that we're attesting to, basically, in this document that's required by City Council is that the, I'm just going to read it to make sure I get it right. At the time the City Council approved the service and assessment plan, the owners owned one hundred percent of the initial parcel. Can you confirm that that's been done?
It, it has been done. Now, there are contracts in place for the properties to be purchased by others as they move forward with the project. But yes, uh, all the private property owners have signed off on this, and it's owned by them. Yes.
Thank you very much. That, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One of the difficult things about getting off the ground with visiting with the developers is they need infrastructure, but the city needs development. And so we've kind of got a difficulty of a failure to launch here because each are needing something. Like, we're wanting value on the ground, but they're also wanting infrastructure. And they also have to have numbers so that they can go to the people who might be putting in a steakhouse, uh, might be putting in a, uh, retail center. And they, they are dying to get the numbers that would benefit, they could show how much it's going to cost per square foot.
Sure.
And so I think that this does that. It gives them some idea, especially the maximum amount of tax levy against the assessment. So, yeah.
Good point.
This is a project unlike any other in Friendswood's history, and it's something that we've been striving for, for the better part of twenty, thirty years. And we're excited to finally see it, uh, get some momentum behind it. Uh, historically, when other developers have looked at it, and I say no less than fifteen when I was visiting with Karen last week, of projects over the last several years, uh, every one of them had issues, obviously hurdles with lack of infrastructure out there, but also with having to compete with Baybrook Mall. I mean, it's hard to get development and momentum of this magnitude in Friendswood because we're so close to forty-five, but we're not on forty-five. So we're excited about it.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to a second. All in favor? And we'll be calling this, uh, this hearing for our next meeting, which is November...
Fourth.
Fourth.
Yes.
Great, great. Okay. Uh, item twelve, I do like Mr. Johnson's, uh, recommendation. I'm going to take that. I'm going to, uh, I'm going to move that we approve twelve B through N in the consent agenda and pull item twelve A off. So, uh...
I'd like to pull B.
All right, let's, I will... I will amend my motion to approve items twelve C through twelve N.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And I, and I like pulling twelve A off because it is a good story. Uh, Sally Branson, who has been our Rep. HGAC, uh, I don't know who our Rep. HGAC was before you got on City Council, but...
Carl Gustafson.
Carl Gustafson. Okay. Well, uh, big shoes to fill there. But anyway, uh, you have done a magnificent job, Sally. I, uh, I like being your backup because you do such a great job that I don't really ever, I get to go to maybe one meeting a year, and all I hear that meeting is, where's Sally? You know, from all the other members that are, they just wish Sally was there, but I say, hey, I'm here. You do such a fantastic job. Maybe you could just enumerate a few things.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your kind words. Um, I actually asked for this position, I think probably the last person who was truly engaged in this was Tom Madison. And he served on council way back there. Um, HGAC is a place where we've learned that you work together. It's thirteen counties that come together. Your population has to be at least twenty-five thousand to have a seat at the table, which we do qualify for that. And I think we've learned, I mean, I pointed to Josh many times, some of the activities that you've been able to get under control here in Friendswood. If you hadn't had the cooperation of three or four other agencies, we might not have been able to make that happen. And that's what happens at HGAC. It's a chance to level the playing field. We all know that there's big goliath up here, you know, Houston, that we have to deal with, and the rest of us, our voices are lost. So that is a way for all of us to have, to level the playing field, so that all voices at the table are heard. And I do my best to represent Friendswood. I think some of the things that, uh, Mr. Johnson was alluding to have more to do with the Transportation Policy Council, which you have to have be a city of fifty thousand have a seat at that table, but I have managed to get it, I'm an alternate for that. Murad is on the TAC, which is the, uh, advisory committee for that. And we do have, and I know what's probably near and dear to your heart, is that we do have a study for where Friendswood Parkway should go, and that was funded by HGAC. So we are small potatoes, but we do have a voice, and we are heard. And, um, I'm a past chair of HGAC as well.
I was going to point that out. Not only has she done such a magnificent job, but she has been chairman of the Board of Directors of HGAC just in her short, what, seven years of being, uh, on the board there. So that's fantastic. And you didn't mention Harris County, but Jose Madrono is here representing Harris County, so that's another big fish in the pond around here.
And we've enjoyed a great partnership with Adrian Garcia. He has been quite the participant on HGAC. We've worked on many committees together. So once again, I feel like it's been an opportunity for Friendswood, for me, to be that rep that reaches beyond our borders and helps Friendswood get some things done. But we're so small, we can't do a lot on our own. We must develop the partnerships, and that's what I've been working for as I've str, uh, attended our HGAC meetings for seven-plus years. And Mayor does participate, and I appreciate that. So. Um, if y'all feel that there's somebody on council who can do a better job, you know, I, I don't have, uh, what do you call it? I'm not queen for the day on that.
You are.
Happy to share, but I'm also happy to continue to serve.
No, you, you are magnificent in that role, so we want to keep you there for as long as you'll serve. So, uh, let me read this. Consider a resolution designating Sally Branson as representative and Mike Foreman as alternate to the HGAC 2025 General Assembly and Board of Directors. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to a second. All in favor? Six to nothing. Okay, uh, twelve B, Consider A Resolution Regarding Nominations To The Board Of Directors Of The Galveston Central Appraisal District, GCAD, For A Two-Year Term Set To Begin January First, 2025 And End On December Thirty-first, 2026.
Reason I wanted to pull that, Mayor, is because we have three nominations, and I believe that one of them's got brass, it's term limited out. And why would we nominate someone who can't serve anymore?
Well, I'll ask Letty, uh, the question because this is not the vote. This is just nomination. Next month, we actually cast our ballot, our vote.
Why would we nominate someone who can't serve?
You can nominate whoever you desire. You can nominate up to five people. We went off of the individuals that we had nominated in the past, and we added Ms. Robyn as the mayor of Kima. If you, uh, choose to remove any one of them or add any, anyone you desire, as long as there's five or less.
Well, do us a favor and look, look at that and... Well, do us a favor and look, look at that and-
Are you sure there's a term limit on the nominations?
Check to see if Mr. Brass-
A state legislator recently sent that down, and, and it's new, and they, and they are applying term limits. I'm, I'm not certain of that, but that's what I'm understanding.
Have to look at the wording in that legislation.
There's two different ones. There's three that the county, that's a general election. And then there are appointed, there are appointees from the taxing entities. And that's the ones that we're, we get to nominate. But then there are three others that sit on the board from recent legislation. And they may have term limits, but I know some of them that have been on a long time, much longer than Scott Brass.
The letter that was attached didn't mention any term limits for the five nominations for those five positions. So I didn't, I didn't check if there was, because the letter didn't refer to any. I'll be happy to look for it.
I think it's the elected ones that the public gets to elect. But we can check into that.
Well, let's move forward with-
If we determine that Scott Brass is term limited out, could we just remove him?
Well, we don't have to vote.
We don't have to vote for him next month.
Yeah, next month.
And there, we could nominate five. We only had three that we wanted to nominate. So it's not like if Scott Brass can't be nominated-
I'd like to make a nomination.
Okay.
Sure. All right. I'd, I'd like to nominate Cheryl Johnson.
She's already a, a, a member of-
But there's sometimes questions on whether she can vote or not.
She's a non-voting member.
Yeah. But if, if we nominate her onto the board, then she could vote. And I think she has the interest of the residents of Friendswood.
Well, I'm, I'm grateful, because we can go up to five.
You can nominate up to five. Yes, sir. Just as a point for her. I don't, she can't serve two positions. She's automatically on the board as one, so I don't know that she can serve as two positions on the board.
Could you check that out?
We can check.
Okay. And if it's determined that she can't serve, then she would be nominated. Could we do that as a contingency?
Make the motion.
I just did. I make a motion that-
We approve these three.
We approve these three and add Cheryl Johnson.
Cheryl Johnson, if-
If she's allowed to serve two positions on one board.
Okay.
And we'll find out about Scott Brass.
Yes, sir.
I will second that motion. All in favor? Opposed?
No, I don't.
Okay, six to nothing. All right. I think we're done with our work tonight. There being no further items. This meeting is now adjourned.